How's it going everybody, this is Martin Stokes here.
And this is Dean Skurri.
And I am a traveller.
And I am a countryman.
Welcome to A Traveller.
And a Countryman Podcast.
So here we are today, what's the story people?
What's the story folks?
Did you actually say folks? This is our podcast here, I'm Martin.
And I'm Dean.
And together we are who?
Dean Martin.
No, we're two idiots.
Two fools.
Now come here, did I just hear you saying folks, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what's the story, where do you get folks from?
I heard people, I heard someone saying it and they were trying to, they were trying to appeal to a wider audience. Hello folks.
Yeah, that's good, it's probably good in America or something like that, but where, like you're actually, you're born, bred, starved in Ballymun. And you want to use the word folks?
Born, bred and starved.
Yeah, what's the big posh word about that?
Hi folks!
Where do you come from, Malachy?
Yeah, you do a posh accent, go.
I can't do a posh accent, no, this is where I am, I'm a traveller, I'm in Ballymun and I can't do that about that.
Do your Ballymun accent.
Ballymun, this is my Ballymun accent.
No, it's not, do it the way you do it.
I don't do a Ballymun accent.
Here, hello.
What's the story?
Do it, go on.
Oh, I can't do it. Sure, I would if I could, but I can't do it.
No, you're sure you're embarrassed or something.
But sure, if I'm embarrassed Dean, it means I can't do the word.
Martin, would you do your voice that you do?
Ah, Dean Lee, we know so William. What's the story Dean? How's it going Martin?
I'm trying to do a traveller accent, that sounded more like.
Well, you did the traveller one so.
How's it going boss?
It's very bad, yeah? That sounds like Christie Moore, he's not a traveller.
This is episode six. Martin, what are we gonna talk about this week?
We're gonna talk about health.
Why are we talking about health?
Because you're overweight, is it?
And I'm over here, you're over there and you're over fifty. Martin was fifty recently.
Yeah, no, I think one of the reasons I'm talking about health is because you're always, you're always talking about jogging and running and swimming and, what do you call this? In the sea and this surfboard, is it?
Right.
All that stuff, but yeah, you're sort of come to me, how would I say, you come to me as a, as a health freak, is that what you call it? Are you a health freak?
I'm not really a health freak, no, I think a health freak for me is somebody who's like addicted to health and fitness or obsessed with their body image or something like that.
No, because what I was saying more is if you are, if you're classed as that, you're doing a very bad job in it.
You're doing a brilliant job.
Yeah?
No, but I do find.
Look at you now Brett.
I do find, that's because I'm talking so much shit.
Stop the language Dean.
Oh sorry.
Very bad language to be using.
No, I, I find when I feel good about myself, when I feel like, you know, I'm in like a nice way and I look at myself in the mirror and go, yeah, that's okay. I just feel better about myself.
But does that do something for your face also?
Well, look Martin, I can say if you'll always be ugly. Is this a slagging episode, is it? Thought that was a couple of weeks ago. Martin's always trying to get a couple of slagging in, right, because that's his, that's his currency, you know what I mean?
Let's talk about health, yeah?
Yeah, let's talk about health, stay waiting that, I will whip you out.
Yeah Dean, you're welcome, anytime my friend, I'm telling you now. Take a, take a shot anytime you want.
This will just be the Countryman podcast, because you'll be too shy to get back on this thing.
But just because I'm a traveller doesn't mean I can't talk like a slag.
I will slag sugar lumps out of you.
Dean, you have, you'd, let's say I was, have a shot, come on.
No, actually I think.
Feel free anytime.
I think banders, a good bit of banders is healthy, but I think what I've done recently is I've started to, like today for example, me and a mate of mine, we were out, we're training for a triathlon, I'm putting on a triathlon in Ballymun with a couple of lads, Jer Prendergrass and a couple of lads. It's called the Ballymun Decathlon Triathlon.
Very good.
We got a bit of partnership of the Catalan who are based here in Ballymun. And July 2nd, we're gonna do the Ballymun Decathlon Triathlon, yeah? And I'm training for that, so what is, what a triathlon is, it's like three sports in one event.
Yeah.
And so I'm training, and so the sports are swimming, cycling and running, so today I swam 500 metres, cycled 15 kilometres and ran.
So you do three different things, isn't it?
Three kilometres, back to back to back.
Oh, you sound like Kevin bloody Wilson, is it?
Kevin bloody Wilson, why, why?
Pissing, fishing, swimming.
You told me to stop, you can't say pissing, pissing is a curse.
Oh, I didn't realise that was a curse, I apologise Dean.
I don't think it is, I don't think anybody's gonna be offended by that. If anyone's offended by pissing or shit, send us in an email at we don't really care too much. We've got better things to be talking about dot com.
Okay, but let's have a bit of respect for people who are listening also, yeah?
Absolutely.
You don't mind that?
So triathlon, that's what I'm doing and I'm enjoying it and, you know, I feel good in my body. Now today I'm a little bit tired because I had sinus for a few days, but it's just good to be out. When the weather's a little bit nice and you're out and you're swimming and you're running. And it helps my head as well, it helps me get up in the morning, I'm not lying in the bed for an hour.
Alright, what do you mean because the fact that you're actually exercising?
Yeah, I'm exercising, I'm feeling happy, I'm out in nature. I find it sometimes very easy just to stay in the bed.
I was gonna say that, how come you're always sleepy every time I see you?
I really like sleeping and I think that that's healthy as well, but it's about getting the balance of it, I think.
Yeah, so you just have a sleepy look about yourself, you're saying?
Yeah. Very good Martin.
Come on Dean, we're taking the meaning away from the health thing here, seriously, we need to be serious about this.
So how are you doing with health, you're 50 years of age recently?
Yes.
How are you getting on?
I'm getting on fine, thanks be to God.
You have a bit of timber on you?
Ah, well look, I do not bit of walking.
You told me the other day that you're starting to walk, you're starting to park the car, further away from the shop or, you know, if you're going somewhere.
It's actually parking the car, the car's actually broke down at the moment, so I don't have it.
Alright, okay.
I don't have it, I don't have it.
Just trying to get out and do a couple of more steps.
Yeah, no, I do a bit of walking in the, in the, in the evenings more or less.
Yeah.
But sure, I'm always active anyway, apart from like going to a gym or stuff like that. But I used to go to the gym years ago. But sometimes life just gets too busy and you can't seem to find the time for it.
How long is years ago now when you say that?
Ah, seriously, 10 years ago.
10 years ago, so you would have been 40?
And the years have flew.
Gone, they're gone in a second.
Yeah, they're gone like that to be honest, yeah. You sort of regret that you didn't sort of stick with these things, no?
Yeah, well look, I, I'm a year, so a year and a half maybe younger than you, it's never too late. I think if you have a bit of mobility, just do a little bit more, get out a couple of steps, get off the sofa, that's the hardest part. Get out the car, get off the sofa.
The car, I think the car is the biggest problem.
Yeah.
Ah, the sofa, no, I'm never really on the sofa to be honest with you, I'm always out and about and doing something like.
Yeah.
But the car, yes, I would blame the car a lot for that because I'm guessing maybe a lot of people have the same habit or the same problem. It's like from the car to the caravan, the car to the caravan, I don't know, I live in a caravan.
Yeah.
Um, maybe the odds outside and about chatting to the lads and, as I said, the odd walk in the evenings.
Would you do like a park walk or something like that?
I sort of be on my feet a lot, yes, but it's not like every part of your body is getting exercised, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I understand there's different types of exercise you have to do to, like the upper body, the lower body and stuff like that.
And you know those machines they have in the parks, have you ever used them?
Um, not really, no, I've seen them, I have seen them.
Seen them, I don't really see the value in them, see the way they're all spread out and there's like, if you're on your own, one person walking through a park, are you gonna stop at them? Or if you're with two or three people, is one person gonna get on and?
No, I think, is the local councils that supply them in the parks?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
So if they, do they not monitor how people are using them or not using them like?
They don't, like only if they're getting wrecked, they'll probably monitor them. I don't think there's anyone there with it.
And it's good that they are there if people have that opportunity, if they want to use them.
What I'm trying to do in Ballymun is get them, a number of them in different locations, but to get a group as a set of nine, you know what I mean? So let's say in, in the park, in Popentry, every Saturday morning at half nine there's a park run. I'd love to get a group, a set of them at, put there at the start line. So when people arrive 15, 20 minutes earlier.
They can use them.
They can use them, they can warm up.
Yeah, but would that, how often would they be used then after that?
Well, if they get into the habit of using it once a week at the park run.
Yeah, but is there a park run just once, if the park run is only once a week, what happens for the rest of the week then?
Yeah, well they'll, they'll still get used.
I'm not saying people won't go running and jogging or whatever they do in the park.
Well, if they weren't there, people won't use them, if they are there, people will use them, or they might use them.
Damn, but did you just say earlier on that there's certain parks that people won't use them, is it?
There's certain parks, like there's a park here, say.
Are we talking about like quiet parks kind of thing, is it?
There's a park here, Sandtree Park, and there's a number of those, say, fitness machines.
Right.
But they're spread out.
Right.
You know what I mean? And there's like one here and then, you know, 20 yards is another one, then 20 yards is another one. And I think if you have a group of people, say you've got three or four people, it's hard to be all together and use them as a group. But I've seen one in DCU Park and there's like a group of nine or 12 of them together and you'll see, it's, you know, a group of lads going over.
The DCU there, the one just beside the DCU.
Yeah, yeah, but you'll see a group of lads hanging there for, for an hour or two, hanging out at them, you know what I mean?
Actually using them.
And using them, yeah, like, like, like an outdoor gym.
Yeah.
So the reason I'm saying it is because during Covid and the lockdown and we could have, you know, any number of Covid and lockdowns in the future.
Could it be down to, could it be down to certain times of people who want to use them, like what are people that's working now and they're not home for a certain time and then they get out for a walk, would even find the time to use them in the evening or would even feel, would they feel safe by even going in around them in the evenings?
Yeah, look, I think.
Like depending on the weather, the weather, summer or winter.
I think wintertime, you're probably less likely to use them after five o'clock because it's gonna be a bit dark, wet and damp.
That's right, yeah.
Um, but I think in summertime where it's bright till nine half, nine, 10 o'clock here, people are off work at five o'clock, people are working from home a lot now.
That's true.
So if, I'm looking to get three or four of them set up in Ballymun. Um, and it's kind of part of a bigger thing that I'm doing.
So apart from people not, say if there is people that's not using them or it is not enough people using them, is there, could there be another solution to that?
Yeah, well, people have options, home gyms or going to a, like a private gym or Dublin City Council gym.
What's the difference in Dublin City Council gym?
And a private gym.
Yeah, like a Ben Done gym now.
Ben Done gym or something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
They're kind of, a little bit different from a Dublin City Council gym, they'd be a little bit more, I don't know, luxurious probably is, is a word I'm trying to.
Yeah, but what if people can't afford this stuff?
Yeah, well then they can go to the DCU gym.
It's the, the outside door, you know what I'm talking about?
No, the, the DCU gym for example, the one in here in Ballymun is like, what's the membership for it, 30 quid a month?
Yeah.
30 quid a month, is it?
Is that actually in, in the DCU, yeah?
Uh, sorry, not DCU, DCC.
DCC, Dublin City Council.
Dublin City Council gym.
That's in Ballymun, yeah.
That's in Ballymun, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, so is, is that, that gym is actually cheaper than the, than the other one, yeah?
Than a Ben Done gym, I think it's a bit cheaper, yeah.
Yeah, alright, but you're saying the other one is more luxurious.
A little bit, you know what I mean, probably have the odd extra jacuzzi or something like that.
Alright.
Where you wouldn't have, you've got the basic sauna, swimming pool, steam room, gym.
In the Dublin City Council gym?
Yeah, have you never, have you been to it?
Um, I went there, say, once with a, the young lad wanted, the young lad wanted to join it.
Yeah.
It was about, about two years ago, I'd say.
And where were you training?
I was actually never in the gym, no.
We might, we might do a visit to it, where were you training, when you were training?
Um, I used to, well, I wouldn't say, well, if we call it training, but I wasn't training like, what I was mainly doing was treadmill and swimming.
Where was that?
In Finglas.
In what, in the gym?
In the gym in Finglas, no, it's a big, a big.
The same gym they have in Finglas, that's a Dublin City Council gym.
Is that right?
They have one of them in Ballymun.
Well, it was actually good.
Yeah, it's good.
It was a big, I think it was a centre, a big centre, community centre, is it? It was a community centre.
Yeah, that's a Dublin City Council gym.
Yeah, but it was also.
Just there on Mellow's Road.
That's right, but it was actually a community centre as well also.
It's right beside there, there's a youth centre and a community centre and a Dublin City Council.
There you go, you have it.
Headquarters.
And it was actually a good gym, it was a good, good big swimming pool there, there was no shortage of treadmills.
So there's one of them in Ballymun and it's, it's, it's really good.
Right, I've never been, I haven't.
It's all done up now, the equipment in the gym is fantastic.
It's alright.
The pool is well kept, there's plenty of staff there, the price is very reasonable. Like, I, I, hopefully I remember, I think it's only like between 30 and 40 quid a month, which is like a euro a day.
Very cheap, isn't it?
Yeah, it's good, really good value.
Very cheap, it's just, it's just to bring yourself around to that, to get, get started.
That's what I'm saying, it's about getting off the co, the sofa or getting out the car.
Making that first move like.
Making that first move, and I think, we think, the, you know, it's gonna be so much effort making the first move, but actually when you go to the gym the first time and you just get in, you take it easy, you don't try and do too much, you'll, you'll enjoy it.
Yeah.
And then you're more likely to, to come back.
What about, what's the continuation of people being in the gym?
What do you mean?
For instance, if a person joins it for a month.
Yeah.
Are they inclined to join it again or just drift off and leave it again or what?
Yeah, well I'd say there's a lot of people, like, what happens generally in gyms is everybody joins in January after the turkey, you know?
Right.
And gyms make loads of money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And January and the middle of February, everybody's going and then it fades off. And then come June, when the sun comes out and everybody wants their summer body.
Yes.
Their start back at it, you know?
Alright, very good.
But the trick is to do a small bit regularly.
Every day more or less.
Whatever, whatever regularly is for you, two days a week, every day, one day a week, whatever regularly is, do a small bit regularly. And basically what you're, I think what you're trying to do is, one is get out of the house, get off the sofa, get out the car, put your body under a little bit of stress but not too much.
No, I would, what I would like to do, I would like at least, if say if I was to join the gym and I probably will sometime, but um.
You don't have long left so.
Ah, is that right?
Well, those 10 years, some from 40 to 50s that are going in the blink of an eye.
I'm thinking about another 30, 35 years at least anyway, you know what I mean? And then I'll just take things easy then after that.
Right, if you, if you get that long.
Well, I'm hoping so, yeah.
Alright, okay.
So why, why, why would I want to be looking for anything less?
Well, I'm just like, you are a traveller, so the average age of a traveller is that little bit less than the settled people.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And who, who made the statement, like where do you come from?
Well, that's like national statistics on the health of the population.
Statistics?
Yeah.
Alright, um, my grandmother lived till 84 years of age.
Yeah, well she, she must have been settled.
84 years of age she was.
I'm only listening, don't give me that look.
Maybe she had a settled background.
That's what I'm saying, you gave me some dagger eyes there, look at you.
Nice one Dean.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so how many, say the, the population of settled people now, what's the average age in there, in your statistics?
Forty age of where people live till?
Yeah.
I think it could be like 70, you know, late 70s, yeah? And the travellers could be early 70s.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So there could be, I think I read somewhere that it could be even 12 years in the difference.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I can honestly say that I don't know, I genuinely don't know a lot of travellers, there's probably is a few, but I don't know a big lot that lives like till 80, 84 years of age.
So, uh.
And on the, and on the other hand, talk about health.
Yeah.
She was a chain smoker.
She was a chain smoker?
Honestly, that's not lies, I genuinely truth, she would, she'd smoke a lot of cigarettes now every single day.
Now, when she lived to that age, she, she lived to that age where she was mobile and healthy or?
Yeah, she was, she was genuine, yeah, she would.
Because you can live to like 90 but you'll be crippled in a bed and you can't move for 20 years.
No, 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 this wasn't the case, she wasn't, she wasn't one that'd go for a walk every single day like exercise wise.
Yeah.
But she'd walk from, she'd wa, she had a big family, you see, she'd walk from caravan to caravan. Like literally, literally every day, yes.
Yeah.
And she'd be up and do her, she'd do her own cup of tea, a lot of stuff like that there.
And what age did you say she was again?
84 years of age.
84?
Yes.
And when did she pass, can I ask?
She's about nearly 10 years old now, so, yeah. But actually I think she is 10 years old.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, she was 84 years of age and as I said, she'd do her own little bit of breakfast and all stuff like that.
She was the nanny?
She was, ah, she was the great, great grandmother to another.
She was the grandmother.
She would have been, um, she would have been the oldest woman on, say, as we call it, on the caravan park.
Was she your mommy's mummy or your daddy's mummy?
She was me father's mother, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
So your father's mother lived, lived to 85 years of age and did she have a husband?
Um, she had a husband who died, so which was my grandfather, he died at 48.
48, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I don't know the full extent of the story, but I think it was a heart, a heart problem, yeah?
And on the mommy's side, what, sorry, your whole mommy and daddy, on your mommy's side?
My mother's side, my grandfather lived until like he was early 70s.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would have been like.
And my grandmother was closely the same age as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would have been, that's like the average, I think in the settled community it's a little bit older, it's, because people retire from their working life at like 65, 66.
Yeah.
And the expectation is they have another maybe 10 to 15 years.
15 years.
But what you're saying is you wouldn't know many travellers who are, say, 70?
No, I don't know, no, I would, I'd know, I'd know a fair few travellers like say 65 to 75.
Okay, okay.
But I wouldn't know a lot of travellers who would live to, no, I'm not saying either that 75 is a big, big margin either.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying, yeah?
Yeah.
I said a fair few.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the other thing about the 75 to 85, there would be very, very, very few travellers.
Yeah.
I couldn't.
So that's what I'm saying, that that's kind of like, uh.
Right now if you ask me somebody.
Kind of like the age.
Now if you ask me, right now if you ask me, um, do I know one traveller right now, 84, 85 years of age?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Just as I said, my grandmother should live to 84.
Just off the top of your head, and you'd know, you know, you'd know a good lump of travellers though.
I know a lot of travellers, yeah, absolutely, of course.
So why do you think that, I'm sure there's various reasons and I'm sure the doctors and the stat, the statisticians have loads of reasons, but why do you think that is?
What is?
That maybe travellers would, wouldn't live as long as settled people?
Um, I don't know the full extent to the reasons or the story, but I'd say, I'd be guessing like, um, let's see, straight up.
Yeah.
Travellers didn't have life easy.
Okay.
That's being honest about, right? As I told in our, in our, in our previous podcast, how travellers were brought up and now I'm not talking about every single traveller out there, okay? Um, but I am saying from what I know of, yeah? How travellers were brought up and the rough life they had, the rough upbringing in a sense where, like, you could say, use the word livelihood, is it?
Okay, the lifestyle.
Lifestyle, yeah, lifestyle, so I'm guessing that, that would have played a big part in it.
And what, what, what's covered in the lifestyle?
Uh, in what way do you mean?
Sorry, you were gonna say, for instance, what?
Um, for instance, like, right, you're living in a caravan and you're, say, whatever length, modern times now we're living in caravans, okay?
Yeah.
We have a few travellers living in houses, okay? Then they have the comforts, if you wanna put it that way, in a caravan, you wouldn't have proper heating.
Okay, so summertime you're grand, but wintertime?
Ah, summertime is lovely in a caravan.
Yeah.
Wintertime, you're literally battered out of it, with the, like if you get the bad weather at all.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? Um, the caravans then, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be proper insulation in them. They're just practically just put together, if you wanna put it that way.
Yeah.
Like caravans were never meant for, for all year living, like.
Yeah.
Caravans are a temporary accommodation, whether you know that or not.
But there are permanent accommodations.
There are permanent accommodation, there are permanent accommodation for me, there are permanent accommodation for all travellers.
Yeah.
All travellers that live in caravans.
That live in caravans.
Yes.
Because there's travellers in Ireland that live in houses.
I just said that about houses, yeah, there is travellers living in houses.
And they would have houses that are insulated with, with hot running water and.
Well, they'll have the, let's say they'll have the same sort of benefits as a settled person, as a, as a countryman, such as you. Now, they wouldn't have the posh house that you have, I know that.
Yeah.
But they'd have a house, okay?
Martin's trying to get a dig in because I live in Port Marne.
Port Marne, yuppie, you're the yuppie Dean.
Yuppa.
We, um, what I'm saying is that, whatever houses have today, what are you telling me about the houses, the comforts and the luxury of a house today?
Well, you've got insulation, you've got central heating, you've got double glazed or triple glazed windows.
Yes.
Um, you've got hot water, baths or showers.
Yes.
Um, you also have individual rooms.
Yes.
And you've got places you can go in your house where you can have quiet time or privacy.
So you've got a lot of space, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 but you can be a lot, you could be on your own, it's very difficult for you to be on your own in your caravan. It's very difficult for you to find a time or there's space where there's not people there, where you can go. Uh, I think from my observations, if you want a quiet time or alone time, you probably need to head off somewhere, you know, is that true?
Right, tell me about the, the comfort you have in a house, I want to hear that.
Uh, the comforts I have in a house.
As a countryman.
I suppose the, the main comforts that you would have is you would have a double bed or a single bed with quite a decent mattress on it, I don't know if you get them all the time in caravans.
Well, yeah, you can have, you can have any type of bed you want in a caravan or any type of mattress you want.
Okay, okay.
So that, that, that comfort is down to your own choice if you, if you can afford it or not.
Uh, the comfort is, I'd say the, the windows on the walls.
Like, so you have double glazed windows?
Double glazed, glazed or triple glazed windows.
And you said something about you have the hot, running hot water.
Running hot water and, and radiators.
And, and so you have central heat.
You've got central heat, the heat of the water and the heat of the house.
This is all winter, all, all winter round, yeah?
That's at the push of a, the push of a button all year round.
Alright, so everything is a tip of a switch then, yeah?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, 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 and also here's another thing, your toilets in the house, you don't have to go outside across a yard.
Like I have to do basically.
Like you have to do, like most travellers who would be in most halting sites in Ireland.
Poor me, but I can manage, I'm talking about older people, it's, it's sad for the older people to have to do this and we do have older people doing this, like travellers wise.
Yeah, it reminds me a little bit of Mount Joy.
So the comfort we have in a caravan.
I'll say this, it reminds me a little bit of Mount Joy about people slopping out, it's, 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 we shouldn't have this in a modern country like, you know what I mean? Where you've got people in their 60s and 70s going from a caravan across a cold yard in the winter to go to a toilet.
I'll tell you the comfort now that a lot of travellers have, right? Um, and, and, and the luxuries is, right? So you have a basic, basic ordinary caravan, you might have two to three bedrooms. The three bedrooms for anyone that has no caravans would probably not make up the size of an ordinary decent bedroom in a house.
Yeah.
Altogether, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, central heating, no.
So where, where we have like a double bed and a wardrobe in a room, you have three rooms in that space.
That's exactly, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So the average caravan would be like, say, your small mobile home, right? Would be like from maybe thirty foot of length.
Yeah.
Um, maybe ten foot wide, okay? Now, so you have your two to three bedrooms in this, mainly two bedrooms in that size of a caravan. You have your small kitchen, you have your small sitting room. Um, so basically, everything is small. You have your, um, you have your toilet and bathroom outside the caravan. They call it like a, a day unit.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so you have your small kitchen on the outside, which will hold, it's classed as a kitchen. It would hold, um, like a washing machine and a dryer, uh, running taps on the outside. Um, then, just within that vicinity, as you call it, you'd have, um, a separate door. For an outside, well, it's, 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 it's inside the, the unit, but it's classed as outside, outside shower.
Okay.
And an outside toilet.
So it's.
So yes, you have to, uh, get up of your own, out of your own home, basically, you're, uh, you have to walk outside the door of the caravan to go outside. Cross the yard to use whatever, if the woman wants to use, uh, as I said, a dryer or a washer. Then same story with a shower and a toilet.
So if anybody was, for example, was in a, uh, you know, a caravan park in France for the holidays during the summer. They'd be staying in a caravan and across the road might be this building called Oblutions Block, yeah?
Yeah.
And in that you would have, um, simple cooking facility, simple shower and toilet facilities and some washing facilities. So people would know what it is, but they, 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 they use it for maybe a week or two during the, the hot season in a foreign country.
Yeah, but see, the thing about it is, in the summertime.
Yeah.
You're using this for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So it's, um, it's home away from home if you're living in a house, okay? So you can, you can, you can manage somehow, as again, in the summertime, you manage that, you, 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 it's not a problem for you to be walking outside. Or using, uh, whatever sort of these washing machines and dryers or whatever.
Yeah, in the oblutions.
Yes, that's okay, because you know what you're setting yourself up there for, because you're actually booking that out as a holiday.
Yeah.
But you're living, if you were living in this all year round, in the hail, rain and snow, freezing cold days.
January minus one degree.
Yes.
Pistons are raining.
But they're, uh.
The wind, the wind is, the wind is howling.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the weather today, we have, uh, for every one dri- dryer, warm day we have, if you have one or two dry days. Chances are you have five, you have another three or four, uh, three or four wet or windy cold days. So you're living this, these conditions literally all your life.
Do you think that that affects your health?
Uh, I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Straight up, I think it does, because people are using, um, they use the, the stove. Now, for anyone that doesn't know, people obviously know what stoves are, but for anyone that doesn't know what a stove is. It's a little metal thing that you put into your caravan, there's a chimney coming through the roof, uh, uh, of the, of the stove, out through the roof of your caravan.
Mm-hmm.
So you try to sort of insulate that as much as possible to make it safe. Um, the other thing about it is then, you're using coal if you can afford it.
Where are you using coal?
No, they can use it if they want, uh, uh, I'm saying is you can use coal if you can afford it.
Yeah, yeah.
You throw it into the stove, you light the fire in the stove.
Okay.
That's what the stove is, it's a, it's a.
So it's like a small little fire, is it?
It is a fire, yes.
Where is that in the kitchen or the sitting room?
It would be in the sitting room, because that, the, the reason it was built into the sitting room is because it's the main part of the caravan that's getting used.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the day is the sitting room.
So a small, a small little fire stove, uh, that you can burn.
Built into the sitting room.
Built in the sitting room that you can burn coal and fire on.
Coal, yes.
A coal and wood on.
You can burn wood, uh, basically.
Do you have one of them in yours?
Right now.
Yeah, yeah.
No, not right now, I don't.
Okay.
I, um, only in the last, I've had a stove, yes, in my caravan for the last, like, say, probably twenty nine, twenty eight, twenty nine years.
Obviously, you wouldn't have central heating.
No, no central heating, that's, this is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
This is where the stove comes in, because there's no central heating. The modern caravans today, there is central heating in them.
Okay.
People have them on caravan sites, call it, we call caravan sites holiday parks.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the thing about it is, these modern caravans, it's not every traveller can afford a modern caravan. Do you get what I'm saying? So, um, basically, if you can afford it, then you can have central heating. But that central heating is ran by bottled gas.
Okay.
Now, again, the bottled gas.
So it's not, it's not piped in gas?
It's not piped natural gas.
Is it piped in water? I'm talking about central heating on holding sites or travelling sites.
That's, that's the point I'm trying to make out to you here, the traveller's caravan site. For anyone that would have, which I don't think there's many that has it, straight up. Um, not many people that I know, where I live anyway, will have, uh, central heating in their caravans, right? But for the one that would have the, the, the central heating, they'd be using bottled gas, there's no natural gas. And these, um, these bottled gases, they're a headache to keep it going because they're very, very expensive, so.
And that's assuming that you have plumbed water coming in as well.
Yeah, considering you have that, but the problem is, they don't have the plumbed water.
So if you have a caravan in a bay, there's no plumbed water, where do you get your water from? You, you, you walk across the road to the oblutions block.
You don't have a choice, because for, like, for instance, the site where we're living, right?
Yeah.
And it's the same for a lot of sites. The water is running through the, the day unit.
Yeah.
So if you want plumbed water, there's either two ways, you have to pipe it up from, from the day unit. Which you, you would need, uh, professional plumbers to do this.
Mm-hmm.
For starters, but on the other hand, are you allowed to do it? You're, you're, you're digging into council property in that stage, right? I also, the other option is to dig across the, to dig the tarmac across the yard.
Yeah.
For the run piping into your caravan, for to have plumbed water, as you call it. So that's not the case.
So most holding sites, caravan sites, traveller sites in Ireland have caravans on them. And they wouldn't have water going into those caravans.
That's right. Nine, ninety nine percent of them.
So it's interesting, because I was, I was listening to a thing today, um, out of two hundred million euro that was available. For travellers and travel accommodation in Ireland, uh, over the last number of years, let's say ten years, seventy eight million of it wasn't spent.
Yeah.
And I tell you, one of the first things that I would do, although I'm not a traveller, is get plumbed water into caravans.
If, if, if what? If the?
If they, to use that money up.
The councils, if the council should do it, they're just saying they should do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a basic necessity in life, isn't it? Like, obviously it is, but water at the same time is a very important in our lives.
Well, if you look, there's, there's this, um, theory, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Yeah, Maslow was this dude, and he came up with this hierarchy of needs. What, what needs are, are at the very bottom that everyone needs, yeah? And in that, we have shelter and water, and then the other needs come on top of that, like food, love, education and so on.
They're all classed as basic needs.
They're absolutely the most basic.
But they're important necessities, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that's, that's what we're, we're saying. So when you're, when you have shelter, but you don't have plumbed water.
No, that's right.
And that's why I'm saying it reminds me of somewhere like Mount Joy, where, uh, you know, you have.
Yeah, but the thing about it is.
You have a Victorian style, uh, weave, or, or, or the tenements, the tenement buildings here in Dublin in the, in that got knocked down.
Do you know something? I actually watched a little bit about that there, there. I was watching a documentary about, um, about a singer, okay?
Yeah.
And he came from the tenements, uh, buildings you're talking about in Dublin, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
And it showed like certain parts of it, and it was actually, be hon- straight up, it was actually sad, to be honest about.
Yeah.
Because there was a lot of poverty in it, but the reality is that travellers are living in this poverty almost every day.
Travellers are living.
I'm not speaking for every single traveller here, because I can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't want to be offending other travellers either, like, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm talking about things that I can say myself, I experienced myself, and also the people around me, kind of thing, you know what I mean? So people that I know, you understand, that's close by, if you want, if you wanna put it that way. The truth is, yeah, there is a lot of poverty involved, without a doubt, and yes, it takes a big impact on travellers' mental health. And all sorts of health, to be fair to it.
Like, I, I would find travellers to be reasonably unhealthy in their diet. In, and in their mental health, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
As in, as in, um, the average traveller for me, their diet isn't, it wouldn't be a healthy diet.
Yeah.
What the, what the food they're putting into their mouth.
For, for a lot of travellers, um, how to say this, I'm, I'm trying to say, thinking the right word, say this without, um, as a fellow says. For a lot of travellers, it's like, um, it's like you're fighting against a brick wall every day. It's like you're trying to get past that barrier. But there is no getting past it.
What is the barrier?
Well, the barrier can be a lot of, uh, a lot of things, in a sense where, like, um, we're talking about poverty if you want.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about deprivation, I know it sort of boils back to the one thing.
Yeah.
And basically, uh, the fact that a lot of travellers, straight up, are pushed aside. Uh, the councils themselves, they're not living up to what they should be doing. Now, I'm not, as I can, I said this before on, on one of our podcasts, I'm not throwing the sympathy card out here, the discrimination card. That's not the case. This is the reality of it. It's not about crying wolf here.
I'm telling you now, right, let's say my community that I'm living in now, I, I'm born and bred and buttered and starved in Ballymore. But recently, I, I'm, I'm out in Port Marne, and I'm telling you, if there was two hundred million euro over the last ten years. That was available for the community of Port Marne, and seventy eight million of that wasn't spent. There'll be outcry, there'll be uproar, there'll be tables getting flipped and people getting sacked.
I'll give you a small idea of that there now, right? In, um, in the site where we live, right?
Yeah.
We've had meetings after meetings for the past, like, say fifteen years, right? Now, and it's all about, let's say, it's trying to, uh, you could call it, in a sense, um. Basically about our sites for starters, about just wanting to make it, uh, look right. Like correcting the basic needs in the site, on the site.
Yeah.
Right? Now, as, as an address, we use it as St Margaret's Park, that is the name of the site, St Margaret's Park, okay? But the thing about it is, we call it a site because we're so used of, you know, through the years, where you live, we're living on a site.
Yeah.
St Margaret's Site, right? There's been a lot of arguments with the council. Because the council are not stepping up to, like, at the end of the day, the council owns that site. They're the landlords of that site.
And you pay rent.
We pay rent on it, and we've, we're paying rent for the length we're in it, we're years and years and years in the site. And the rent is getting paid in it, right? Now, the thing about it is, uh, if there's a problem on a site, we should be able to call the council and say, look at, there's a problem here with such and such. Uh, we should be able to say, so look at, we want our water plumbed into our caravans.
Yeah, so there's a problem.
First thing they'll talk about is.
Problem inside your caravan, like, if there's a problem inside the council house.
They don't take responsibility for that.
You sort that out yourself, but if there's a problem outside, if, if there's a council house in Ballymore and they don't have water going from the street into the house.
Strange thing about it is.
The council, and the council will be there in the morning.
I know that, that's for sure. The strange thing about it is, we're paying rent on, on, for, um, how would I say this? We're paying, uh, rent for, it's like house rent.
Yeah.
Okay, but the only thing about it is, we have our own caravans, which are not the greatest. But the point about it is, we're, um, we literally should be only paying ground rent, if, if that makes any sense.
Can I ask, uh, just so we clear up, the caravan that's in the bay, that's on the ground.
We own them ourselves.
You own that, that's your property.
Yeah, but the thing about it is, these caravans are old, they're old.
Well, I've been up in your place and, and recently we got a number of them checked, and they were like forty years old, thirty years old.
Some of the caravans, straight up, yes, there's an old lady up on our site, right? And she had no, she had a caravan there, she was like seventy, I'm guessing seventy, seventy two years, seventy one, seventy two years of age, right? And she's not in the best of health, to be honest about it, and she had an old caravan there. And the truth is, the caravan could have been probably anything up to thirty years old, maybe more, I don't know, I'm just, I'm guessing the, the, the age of it. Now, but that's one of many, it's because people can't afford them.
So just to put that into perspective, right, so thirty years ago, from now is like nineteen ninety, right?
Nineteen ninety, probably, as I said, from twenty five, thirty years old.
Okay, so imagine you went to a nice holiday camp, say, in France.
Yes.
And you turned up, and the fella goes, how's it going? That's your caravan over there, we're giving you the special one in the corner there, that's from nineteen ninety.
You wouldn't, you, you wouldn't.
You'd go, no, I'll take one that's like brand new.
You'd walk away from it, yeah?
You'd go, I'm, I'm not going in there.
No, no.
No insulation, there's no heat, the place has fallen apart.
No person that would have a choice would, would, would go into it.
Yeah.
They would automatically turn away from it.
They'd say, we'll take the one with the double glazed windows and the, and the heating and the air conditioning, and the plumbed in water and the plumbed in this and that and the other.
So, um, that's just, as I said to you there, that's just the reality.
Go into them and you go, by the way, I'm bringing the eighty five year old, uh, grandmother in.
Yes.
Can we throw her into the, the nineteen ninety model there?
You see, the thing about it is that the caravans now, and, and, like, people can turn around and say, hold it for one second, these caravans are not that bad. We go on holiday, we go to such a park, we go here and we see such a caravans, absolutely. Go, if you, if you go to holiday parks now, even around Ireland.
Yeah.
I go from here to England and go onto holiday parks, you will see state of the art mobile homes.
Yeah.
And these things, you could live in them every single, you could, to be honest, they're called a residential, you could live in them all year round if you wanted to. That's how nice and well-built they are. They're fully insulated, uh, sides, roof and floor. They have built-in bathrooms and showers, you, you, in, in them, say, built-in, proper built-in kitchens. With, um, do you know these things on them, the washers, dryers, all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, dishwashers.
The women want to use, yes, they're on board, everything's on board. Uh, they have, uh, all central heating the whole way through. Now, they're actually making caravans bigger also. They're making them like seven, between like thirty six and forty two foot length.
Which is like.
They're actually making them bigger than that.
Which is like three rooms stuck together, rather than a thirty foot one by ten foot, which is like two rooms stuck together.
It's like, uh, it's straight up, it's like, uh, you're moving them from an, an old caravan that you have had there for years, that's roughed up and cold and damp. Or whatever it might be, anyway. But the thing about it is, you're, um, you're going from that into the lap of luxury.
Yeah.
And it's still only a caravan.
Yeah.
No matter how you look at it, and they were, they were designed for temporary living, but they're making them so good now. But the truth is, even a, even a man with a good job probably couldn't afford one of them.
Yeah.
They're so expensive.
They're probably more efficient as well in terms of, like, heating them. I wouldn't imagine that heating your caravan. From November to March is, is cheap.
No, if you have an old caravan at all, the thing about them is, they don't hold the heat. If, if you have, like, was it, the, the majority of, of, I'm saying the majority, like, for instance, I would use a couple of electric heaters.
Yeah.
That's because, now, when I did have a stove in my caravan, I'd also have a heater. Down the, down the room, basically.
Yeah.
Because the, the stove wouldn't, the heat wouldn't.
There's no way for the heat to transfer from that room.
Travel that far, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're basically cozy in the sitting room. Now, this is not just me, this is for a lot of travellers also. I'm talking about a lot of travellers I know. That live the same lifestyle as I've lived.
Yeah, obviously, there's people, uh, it does, there's what I would call outliers, there's people who have the big, huge fancy caravan with the plumbed in this and that. But that's not the majority of travellers.
It's very rare.
It's very rare.
Honestly, it's very rare.
Yeah, yeah, so the majority of travellers would be living in a very similar, normal, uninsulated caravan like you. With un, with not, with plumbed in water and with no, no heating plumbed.
That's right.
Yeah, and they're grand during the summer months from May, June, July, August, September, but come October, November.
Some, uh.
You start to feel the chill.
Some sites have, um, have bigger day units, uh, maybe something in the width of maybe fifteen foot by maybe thirty foot length.
Yeah.
Where you, it's, uh, you could put like a settee into it or a TV. And maybe a stove or a range built into it. So that supplies a good bit of heating, but it's a day unit, so you'd use that for the day. And then, for instance, you want to, your car, use your caravan at night. So you could have an electric heater running in the caravan at night, that sort of stuff.
And it's on all night in the room?
Well, you probably wouldn't leave it plugged in at night because it probably wouldn't be safe.
Yeah.
That's not to say that you wouldn't be cold at night.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't, you don't, you don't want to be leaving like the, the electric heaters plugged in all night.
So you turn it off, you get cold, because it don't hold the heat?
Because you're thinking of the safety side of it. So you, you put up with the cold, so when you fall asleep, you know that your heater is off because. You know how plugs get hot and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It can be dangerous, like, you know what I mean?
So you've got, you've got that proper cold that I would have experienced in the eighties in Ballymore before central heating, where your toes are freezing.
Now you have it. But the thing about it is, what I'm saying, I'm back to the heating part of it again, where you don't have the option of leaving heaters on at night. Again, I said it's too, it, it is too dangerous. So either you want it or not, you can't do it.
Well, most people would know a super sir, which is like a gas.
Uh, we used, uh, no, we used to use the super sirs, like, for instance, my parents now.
Yeah.
And their generation, they would have used it, the super sir was a luxury at the time for them.
But you know that you're not leaving a super sir on when you're going to bed.
You can't, because.
You won't wake up.
You, you know how you have, um, know today how you have in the, in the, these, the house boilers, as they call them, isn't it? They're, um, say the central heat, for instance.
Yeah.
There's a boiler that you, that runs that, right, which is run by gas. I know that part, right?
Yeah.
Uh, then you have the, the carbon monoxide side of it, is that right?
Pretty good, yeah.
Right. Well, if you went back thirty years, and you had a super sir, which I know you're saying that you probably used them yourselves back then. When there was no central heating, but they used to leave a glass of water on top of them.
Yes.
Because the fumes that was actually coming from that super sir heater would have been carbon monoxide. But then carbon monoxide wasn't a big thing back then, was it?
We, we, yeah, we didn't.
Do you get what I'm saying?
We didn't have carbon monoxide alarms in our house and so on.
Thing, and they probably had, had, they had a very rare knowledge of it. But also, this, this glass of water then was meant to consume the fumes for however. For whatever reason and however it worked.
Yeah.
But it somehow seemed to work, but not saying it took away at all, but this, this was something that you still couldn't use at night. You had to knock that heater off before you went to bed, because it was dangerous.
So that must have an effect.
So you had, no choice, beer the cold, to beer the cold, although you have a heater sitting there beside you, but it has to be switched off.
So there's a few things here, I'm gonna throw them out, right, one is the, the heating. Uh, cold in the winter, that must have an effect on your health over, let's say, thirty, forty years of your life.
Well, let, let's put it this way, we, I'm talking here about older people, right? It would have a bigger effect on older people. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we say, let's say somebody's.
Bigger effect on kids.
Somebody is fifty years of age, which is your age.
Yes.
Yeah, for the next thirty years, please God.
Yes.
You're going to be in a caravan that during four or five months of the year.
Yes.
Is freezing.
Literally, yes.
That's gonna have an effect on your health.
Yes, but the thing about it is, me personally, I'm gone so used to, I don't, I don't, I don't, uh.
Whether or not you're used to it, doesn't mean, doesn't mean, doesn't mean it, it doesn't affect your health.
Pity, I would have a lot of pity for the, the, the older people, basically.
Yeah.
Uh, for the kids, that's the, that's the people that, that, they're the people that I'd be more worried about, more than myself.
You're a big, strong, burly man, you're not gonna be worrying about a bit of cold, I'm saying, there's unknown effects to that cold on your health. Over a thirty year period.
Uh, there probably is, yeah, there probably is, but, uh, wha- as I said to you, what I'm saying is that. if whatever effect it might take, um, it would take a bigger effect on older people and younger kids.
Yeah.
Do you get what I'm saying?
Uh, yeah, and especially if they were, if they were ill, if they were infirmed, if they had any kind of, any kind of virus.
Then you have kids getting out in the mornings, right, with, with no options or no choices, the fellow would say. And they got it up in the mornings, so you have to have, try to have a bit of heating up running there for them in the winter times. So you don't, just add a little bit of heat at all to get the kid out for bed, out of bed for school.
So the way it is now in most homes, for example, you'd have an app on your phone and you'd have a program to turn on at half six in the morning for a half an hour.
Uh, would you have that luxury, Dean? Cause I don't.
Uh, I don't, but a, a lot of people do.
Not a lot of travelers.
There's an, there's an app on their phone and it goes, right, uh, we're up in the morning, the kids are up, get the heating going there. Fl- flare the heating up there at half past six and make sure the floors are, are, are warm.
Yeah, that's great. That sounds, that sounds, that sounds very nice.
It sounds cushy, that doesn't.
Yeah, Dean, but as I said again, look, I know this all started off with health, but yeah, it boils back to the one thing. People's health, of course.
Absolutely.
If you haven't got these small little luxuries in your life, sure, it's obvious it makes life that bit harder.
They're not even, these aren't luxuries, these are basics.
They are to some people.
These are basics.
No, they're basic, but I'm telling you now, they're luxuries to some people, believe me.
Absolutely.
If you're living in a house.
Yes.
And you have a flick of a switch and you have the, the, that switch turns on all your heating, yeah? Or however you set your timers and stuff like that there, yeah? Then you go there and you have your hot water running for you. You have your showers or your baths or everything, and it's all in the one area, everything is in comfort. Now, them things mightn't be a luxury to the man that's living in them all his life. But believe me, to the, to a lot of the, a lot of the traveler community, they are a luxury.
Mm-hmm.
If they have them, but they don't have them.
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm talking about now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So that's when it becomes, it's a ba, they are the basic necessities in life, but they also become a luxury when you haven't got them.
Very good, yeah.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I know, it does, makes perfect sense.
So now, this is what I'm talking about. It's like a man that has no, has no car and he's walking to work every morning, yeah? The necessity for him is a car, but he doesn't have it. So when he gets his car, it becomes a luxury for him.
Pretty good, yeah.
But the man that has it, has it, has that necessity every single day, it's no more a luxury for him, it's a normal thing.
Yeah, and he doesn't, it doesn't enter his head that somebody mightn't have that.
Yes, now you have it.
And that not having that might affect their health.
Yeah.
Because if you have to walk, if you have to walk five kilometers every morning in the business rain.
Stuff is to blame, the, like, I'm not, as I said again, I'm not looking for someone to blame here or throwing that blame card out. In all honesty, a lot of this stuff is, is to bl, is the councils to blame.
Well, I tell you what, Martin, if you had.
What would you think of that?
If you had two hundred thousand euro, yeah, in your pocket.
Yes.
And you were to do a, a job in your caravan.
Yeah.
And I came to you in a couple of years' time and said, you just spend that two hundred thousand euro, and you said, well, I only spent a hundred thousand of it. I'm at the keeping the other hundred thousand.
What if, what if, what if I told you I didn't spend none of it at all, what would happen?
Well, depending on who I am.
Yeah.
I would either shut up, put up.
Yes.
Or rip you apart.
Right. So basically, what, 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 what was, uh, is this what we're seeing here? I'm trying to get a picture here, right?
Yeah.
Um, some guy puts a hundred thousand in my hand.
Yeah.
And he says to me, Martin, look, there's five people over there.
Mm-hmm.
That each of them needs such and such and such a thing, yeah? Will you take care of them people with that money? But, of course, uh, twelve months down the line, five years down the line, these people are still in the same needs. And I have a hundred thousand euros in my pocket. So I haven't spent that hundred thousand on the things that need is spending.
But I, I'm gonna even add it more, those people are paying you rent.
Yeah, that's even worse again, yes.
And the money that you're spending isn't yours, it comes from their friends.
Yes.
Other, other, other people around the country who are their friends.
The reality of it is, it's not, it's not my money.
No.
It was only, um, my two hands were only used taking them one hand.
Yeah.
Pass it out on the other. But what I done, I took it in one hand and I didn't pass it out in the other.
You took it in one hand, you didn't pass it out to the other and, and, and you gave dogs abuse to the people you were meant to give it to.
We have some nice, um, we have some nice councils who operate that way. Did, 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 did you not know about that, Dean? No?
I think you're being a bit sarcastic.
I'm not, yeah, I am being sarcastic. I'm, I'm being straight up sarcastic.
Yeah.
And I'll explain to you where the sarcasm comes in, right? Some councils, right, the government will give them, um, a certain amount of money, yeah? And say, look, this is to spend, not like literally spend on the, the, the traveler community. But they are saying here, look, there is certain needs in their lives, we want you to go and fix them things, okay? Now, um, but the councils, some of them, want to do a great job here. We want to let the government think that everything is sorted here. They're not in need of anything here, the, the traveling community.
All they need to be.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna spend a, a small few bob and maybe clean up the place. Just a small, uh, we'll take a few small boxes here, but we'll make it look like it's big. So what we do, we, we'll fill in a page of all small ticks, yeah? So now it looks like we're doing something here, okay?
It's like when the queen goes around, they paint, they, they paint the whole town up. So there's a smelt of fresh paint everywhere.
That's right.
But actually what's going on is, they're kicking the homeless people off the streets, so the queen doesn't see them.
One hundred percent, exactly. So now, um, you have certain councils who, uh, there's money granted to them. But it's granted to them for to use on keeping things right in the traveling community. So you have councils who are saying, look, uh, everything is sorted, we don't need that money, we're gonna give it back to you. So they hand that money back to the governments. They'll probably take a bit of it as long as I don't know. But anyway. Then you have the other council who say, look, we will, we'll spend a small bit on them and we'll give the rest back. Then you have the, the other council who might say, look, there is a few things to be done here, let's go and do them. But it's very rare.
Mm-hmm.
Very, very rare in the traveler community.
Yeah, that's the exception, the exception is somebody uses, the exception is that somebody uses the whole budget. The rule is that most of them don't use all the budget.
Watch this. The majority of councils are handing the money back to the governments. So now, um, how, how it looks here now, right? Uh, Dean, you're working for me, right? I'm, I'm, I'm the government official here, you're the councilman, yeah? I'm saying to you, Dean, there's a certain amount of money going spending that traveler site there. But then you'll come back to me six months later and I'm asking you, uh, Dean, how are you gonna have that money just spending on the traveler community, on the travelers that needed such a thing down here, this, this needed fixing, that needed fixing. And you're saying to me, no, Martin, I didn't use that money, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it back to you now because everything's above board. So now you're looking good now, aren't you?
Yeah.
So I'm saying, look at here, fair play to Dean, he's, he's doing a great job here, he's not wasting my money. But the reality of it is that it didn't need to be wasted, it needed to be put to good use. So you didn't put it to good use then.
So what am I, am I saying to you, listen, I need to go down there and check that, that you've done your job?
Yeah, but nine times out of ten, it's not checked. So.
Who's doing the checking?
No, 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 this, no, this is the thing about is, it's, 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 it's based on trust then, isn't it?
Yeah.
So I'm trusting you, Dean, to give you money to go and help out that site there and fix it up, do whatever we know with it. But you'll come back to me and say, look, it doesn't need fixing up, there's your money back. We spent such a much on small things, all right. So now Dean is a good guy, why? He's doing a great job here, he didn't waste our money. Do you understand? But it's happened too often. Can you picture where it come from? So the money's going back to the governments again, hasn't it? Um, in two ta, in two thousand and nine.
Hopefully it's going, hopefully it's going back to the government, or not, or not into his pocket or a black hole, go on.
Right, yes, now you have it. The other thing about it is, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty one, we're in two thousand twenty two now, okay?
Yeah.
So we're go, we're, we're gonna go at early two thousand twenty two. There was sixty nine million euros given in to the councils to actually help the traveler community. But when I say help the traveler community, I'm not saying take money and put it into their hands, that wasn't the case. It was to actually, uh, deal with the accommodation issues.
Mm-hmm.
Right? In other words, there's a site there that needs repairs, it needs cleaning up, it needs fixing up. There's such things broken and you have to fix that stuff. So it's mainly down to maintenance. The, not a fraction of this sixty nine million was spent. Like up until, um, say, October and November of, um, of two thousand and twenty one, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Like we're living in, in fresh times here, you know what I mean? We're not living in the old ages, like, you know?
It's modern times with all the mod, all the mod cons.
Right. So up until then, right, there was absolutely nothing done around, around that site where, where we live.
Where you are.
Now, it's a thirty bay site, it, it, it's meant to, to, let's say, house thirty families. Only in the last six years, they redone the electricity on it. The electricity was more times off than on. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's like, it's, well, it'd be like the eighties when I grew up in Ballymore, there was blackouts every couple of months.
Now you have it, but this, no, this was happening now almost every, seriously, a week wouldn't go by without a black, a, a blackout on the site. That's what I'm talking about. So it took them years and years and years and years to even recognize that problem. But yet, the people on the site were ringing the council offices almost every single day. Almost every single day, saying they had a problem with their electricity. And how it was done on, how it was done on the site was that, um, the connection was coming from whatever sort of supply, yeah? If one bay went off, it was guaranteed four bays, as we call them bays, that's where our caravans are based.
We're all connected, they'd all go off.
Four at the one time would go off. Now, if this happened to you on, um, say a Friday afternoon. Then your electricity wasn't getting back on until Monday, Monday morning or Monday afternoon. So you had, uh, say, Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, you were literally four days without your electricity.
So we like, if, we like if, if the power went off in house number five.
Are you telling me?
House six, seven, eight and nine were also off.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So now you had four different families, basically.
Because one house, because, because the trips which went in one house.
The four they must have off.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have thirty bays, but, um, whatever, if you, if you divide them into fours, okay?
Se- seven.
So basically, uh, if, if my electricity went off, for instance, which it happened many, many times. I could automatically say to you, yeah, well, such and such ones off now as well. So you'd know that there was a problem coming from the main supply. So it took them years and years and years to sort a problem out, for whatever reason was happening, nobody, up to this day, nobody knows.
I'm sure, I'm sure somebody knows, I'm sure it's just an electrical wiring thing.
Uh, it could have been something where, um.
I'm sure they didn't bother our selling you though.
No, it, it could be a thing where they had different phases of, 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 uh, electrical cables, like for different strengths.
Yeah, yeah.
That there wasn't enough power on these cables to actually run four bays.
So when did that get sorted out?
About six or seven years ago.
So it's, uh, twenty twenty, what year is it now, twenty what?
That's another luxury they have, yeah.
Let's imagine twenty eighteen is the year and there's power cuts constant in, on a side.
Uh, no, it, honestly, it was a constant thing. So that, that, that's, that's going back to, uh, people's health again. So you're lifting darkness, you're lifting the freezing cold, if you have, if you're lucky enough to have a stove in your caravan. You'll throw your, uh, your wood and bits and pieces into it, okay? So at least you might have a bit of heat. But for the people that didn't have stoves, so were using electric heaters, so therefore, your electric is off, you have no heating now, have you? Cause you don't have a stove. Then you have no lighting. Sometimes what they have to do then is, look, think of a way to create some sort of lighting, light or, or heat.
Go on, tell me how.
Uh, it wasn't very easy, but that's what you.
How would you deal with Martin? Come on.
Well, if, as I said again, if you, if you, if you were lucky enough to have a stove.
Yeah.
You had your bit of heat, that was your heat then, wasn't it?
Where would you get the power from?
Uh, the power, you'd be going off looking to get a generator.
Okay.
Some people would keep a generator on standby. Uh, these generators wouldn't be big expensive, yucks.
And would you come off a local lamp or anything like that?
Uh, you could, um, no, 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 it'd be very dangerous, be very, very dangerous, no. Um, if you had a generator on a standby.
You've got your family in there and all that, you don't want to be taking a risk coming off a lamppost or, or, or batteries or something like that, you know what I mean?
Very, very dangerous. The thing about it, if you, if you were lucky enough to have, um, a generator, for the person that didn't have a generator. They'd look for the next person that would have one, maybe in a, in another site.
So this is a little, like a little, a little diesel out, outside generator.
Petrol or diesel, yes. And you just pull that, pull that string and she'd flare up.
And that'd be going outside and that'd give you a bit of power.
I'll tell you what it'll be. It'd be like, um, a petrol lawnmower without the blades.
Right, very good.
That's it, that'd be the, uh, a description.
And you'd power your house, or your, sorry, your caravan out there.
It wouldn't give you great power, no.
Yeah.
It would power like a, a T V and maybe a light.
Okay.
That, that you'd want to have a, a good, a good, strong.
Picture like, uh, this is like me in Ballymore in the eighties.
Yeah.
When we were knee deep in poverty and it was people sharing food and, um, there's no central heating. There's no hot water, the gaff is freezing, you've got, uh, blankets and coats over the kids in the bed.
Well, there you go. That's in the eighties. Was that, was acceptable in the eighties?
Was it acceptable in the eighties? Is that, is that a song?
Or was it just a reality of it?
Acceptable in, that was just a reality for a lot of working class people in places like Ballymore and Finglis or whatever. I'm sure around the country as well.
Yeah.
Uh, but then we got central heating, then, then we got, then we got double glazed windows.
Who helped them to get out of that?
Who helped them to get out of that? Dublin City Council in this community, they, they gave grants for, uh, double glazed windows for central heating and so on.
Yes.
Um, because we were paying rent in their property and so they were the landlord.
So basically, the council, the local council, we call it.
Yeah.
Um, helps to improve your life situations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, they didn't do a great, they didn't do a great job in this community, cause, uh, you know, the stories about, uh, Dublin City Council and Ballymore residents are, are notorious, like, you know what I mean?
Well, when you were talking about.
An awful lot better job than they done with the traveling people up in the corner of Ballymore.
This is what I'm trying to get at. When you were, um, when you were saying you were living in a hu, is it a house or flats you're living in?
I was in, uh, a flat, a tower and a house, but mainly a house.
Years ago.
Yeah, yeah, mainly the house.
Right then. So basically, um, forty years ago, the council gave grants, I would say.
Yeah.
To, for double glazed windows.
Yeah.
They put central heating into the houses.
Yeah.
Um, right, uh, on the traveler side of it, that's not happening today, never mind forty years ago.
So it might sound, it might come across that Martin is painting a picture or giving out or moaning. Uh, but I know Martin, and you can probably hear from his voice, he's not the poor me, he's not the, you know, playing the traveler card or the racist card or anything like that. He's painting a picture.
I'll tell you one.
Modern Ireland and how travelers in modern Ireland live.
And the reality of it.
And the conditions, the lifestyles.
Yeah, it's not, it's not about, uh, this is not about discrimination or this is not about, uh, pity or it's not, it's not, that's not the case whatsoever. We're simply having a chat here about the reality of things in Ireland.
Yeah.
In the traveling community. Now, what, I know we're talking about health issues, okay? But this is part of tra, this is part of the health issue.
Absolutely.
On the traveler side of it.
Martin.
You can tell me about the, about the, the countryman side of it if you want, yeah?
I, I'll tell you that about that now. Here's the countryman side of it. In the tenements, forty, fifty, sixty years ago. There was people sharing bathrooms and kitchens, uh, uh, I'm sorry, toilets, outside toilets, yeah?
Fifty years ago.
Fifty, sixty years ago.
Right, yeah.
Oh, hold on, nineteen fifties, right? Which is like seventy years ago, nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, there was still people in tenements in Ireland.
Right.
In Dublin, um, ten families in one block, in one, in, in one old tenement. Um, sharing an outhouse, sharing a bathroom outside, and they were riddled with disease, they had uh, all types of disease, they had rats and all that type of stuff. We got rid of that in this country, uh, and we brought in.
Who got rid of the councils, is it?
Uh, the governments and the council, yeah.
Governments, very good.
Like the, the government and the council built this community here in Ballymore. They got the land off U C D. And they built this, uh, utopia called Ballymore. And in the houses here, in, in the flats here in nineteen sixty, the end of the sixties. We had permanent hot water, permanent heating and, um, really good windows. So, and that was fifty years ago.
You ha, you're saying the councils fixed up the houses, they put double glazed windows, they put central heating in.
Yeah, but then also, but then also fifteen years ago, they regenerated the whole community at a cost of a billion euro, yeah?
Again, which, which rightly so, the people deserve it, without, and, uh, we're talking about a central community, they, they do deserve it because they, they want to be living, uh, in a healthy, um, environment. Forty years ago, which seems a long, long time, but it's not, right? When the, when the, when the, when the council was doing all of that, St Margaret's Park, Ballymore Caravan site, yeah?
Yeah.
Was just a plain tarmac ground, okay?
Mm-hmm.
No walls in between, no, say, what do you call, toilets, no washrooms, no, nothing at all whatsoever.
So it's like a car park.
No, I tell you what they had, they had a little, small, little galvanized toilet. Uh, I'm sure people remember this anyway. They used them on building sites.
So it was like a car park with a bleeding hut on it?
That, that's, no, this is what it was. So you had one of them, you had one tap, just one tap.
Yeah.
For thirty bays, thirty, for thirty families. And it was down at the very bottom of the site. Where the, say, where the entrance was.
Yeah.
To the site, okay? And basically, you'd see the, well, we all had to do it. You'd push the churn can, yeah, it was, it was, it was, um, a churn can, if you don't know what a churn can is, would have been a cream re can, right? It'd be about four foot in height, yeah? And they used to use them in the farms for holding milk.
Like a big silver, um, canister.
It was made of aluminium, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Big aluminium can with a lid on it and two handles, yeah? So you'd push that down and you'd get, uh, you could actually roll it. You filled out a water and that was your water. Now, you might do this a couple of times a day.
Yeah.
That was your water supply at the time.
And would that have a tap on it?
No, there would, there would be, no, there was a lid, you take the lid off it.
You'd take a lid off it?
Yeah, some of them used to have the.
How would you get the water out of it?
Just put your, your, your whatever.
What, put a jug in it?
Turn it on one side, the girls maybe, uh, back then, uh, the mothers or the, the bigger girls or whatever. Turn it and put the, throw, maybe throw the water from that into a basin or a pot or a burner, whatever they'll be using.
Where were you getting electricity from?
There was no electricity, that's the point I'm getting at.
So there was, there was one tap giving water, there was no electricity?
There was absolutely.
Where was the heating from?
There was no heating, same story.
Thirty-five years ago?
Yeah, you, you'd have to fit a range, you know what a range is, don't you?
Yeah.
Now, the old houses today, I know that you still use ranges probably, but these ranges would have you render central heating and stuff in the houses. Um, the range would be, uh, as you know, a hot plate on top.
Yeah.
So you put your range in and just burn what you want in it. Wood, coal, brickets, anything you get. Whatever means you had of heating the place up. So that would be the main course of heating.
And would you cook on that as well?
But then this went on for years and years, yeah, they cook on it also.
Yeah.
This, this went on for years and years and years then, up to the same thing as a stove. So stove and a range, the only difference was a stove was smaller.
So there's, there's loads of things coming into my head. One is that the government just announced that they're gonna help people retrofit their houses. They're already insulated houses.
Yeah.
With central heating in them, they're gonna help them, give them grants to help them insulate these houses more.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Because they're inefficient, because they're losing energy.
Well, it's a sign that, uh, it's a sign that the government didn't want anything to do with travellers, simple as. Look, we give them a bit of ground, let them pull onto it if they want, if they don't find it, they move along, but we'll do as less as possible for them, so then they have no choice to move along. But the fact, the reality of it is that they didn't, they, they didn't have a choice moving along or even staying, if you, if that makes any sense. So they stood because they didn't have no other options, but it looked like the coun- the, the, the councils and the governments. Wanted them to move along, but where would you move to? Move to another council.
Go and move, shift.
And go and get the same treatment.
Yeah.
So what, what was the sense of moving off that site and travelling down the road, maybe twenty or thirty or forty or fifty miles, whatever? Yes, and moving on to another site, the same thing, and still getting the same treatment, maybe worse. So there was, there would have been no, as I said, no running waters, no electricities, um, these toilets that they use in, in building sites. They were there for years and years and years. From about nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-seven, there was no electricity on that site. Now, that's in ninety, that's up to nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah.
So we're still living in modern times.
Yeah.
Think of it that way. And there was no electricity, there was concrete units. You could call them a shed if you want, but the, 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 what the only way to differ from a shed is they were made of concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah? And everything in them says taps, sinks, toilet pots, everything was all made of steel. This was a prison unit.
Yeah, it was like, it was like it was built to last, but like.
Yeah, I tell you. It was, uh, anti, uh, what do you call it? I have the word Dean, I'm telling you, I can't, I can't find the word.
Think about it, there's no rush.
In other words, you, you could not do no damage to this. Um, these things were built to last forever. You couldn't damage these with a J C.
Saying they were bomb proof. It was like something you'd put into a prison or into a military, uh, unit or something like that.
Yeah, there were, uh.
There was nothing luxurious about it.
Let's say luxurious, you couldn't damage these things with a J C B. I'm telling you, I know that sounds, sounds funny to you Dean, but that's, that is a fact, that is a reality.
The way you said it sounded funny.
You could not damage them with a J C B, and that's the truth, there's no doubt about that. Anti-vandal, I think you're the right.
Yeah, 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 very good.
Something about, yeah.
Vandal proof.
There were, yeah, there were anti-van- anti-vandal, anti-vandal proof, yeah, something like that anyway. I told you before we started here, I didn't have no education, all right?
Yeah.
I can't think of the word for that, right? Anyway, listen, um, there was still no electricity and everything was outside again still, up the, up the, as it is now. The only thing that has changed when I do, when I really think of it now, is the fact that the site has electricity. There's outside lighting on the site now, yeah, public lighting outside, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that wasn't on the other side, it wasn't on the site before that, because it was, it was literally.
If you're walking around or driving around that night, you can, you can see people.
No, you could actually walk into somebody and you wouldn't know, you could bump into them and you, and they wouldn't know it. Pitch dark, literally, pitch dark. On the site that, that, that you'd be living on. Now, I'm not just talking here about me, I'm not just talking about St Margaret's Park and Ballymore. I can honestly say this was probably every site around, around Ireland.
I, I'm gonna give you a bit of my perspective. I was on, I've been on different sites over the last, uh, number of years. Um, St Margaret's Park is where I spend most of my time hanging out with you, but I've been up in, say, a Villa Park or, or, up in Dunce. And there, you, you could go around Ireland comparing parks and some of them aren't as bad as others. So Margaret's Park is, i- i- is okay, but there are some, there are some places that are just left. And there, you know, if, if you wanna do a bit of research yourself on it, um, out there, there are places that basically don't have anything. They've no running water, they, they've no electricity. And I remember, I was in a project with, um, a couple of mates of mine. Uh, a big mural project up there and we painted a mural on side of one of the houses, uh, up beside St Margaret's Park. And I brought this London guy, this rapper, this grime artist in from London, he was doing a tour, um, and we brought him in. His name is Skepti and we showed him around, uh, St Margaret's Park. And he said to me, he said, I've just travelled the world. And I've never seen anywhere like this. He said, what is this place?
He never seen anything as bad as that.
He's never seen anything as bad as it. He said he just, he just came off a world tour. We drove his bus up into St Margaret's Park, he got out of the bus and he walked around and he was almost in tears, like.
He was a singer, wasn't he?
He was a rapper, yeah.
Rapper, yeah.
He was almost in tears. He was a young, a young black rapper from London. And that was his first observation of this place. It was like, wow, what is this place? Um, and that's not the poor me or whatever, this is just a reality of how travellers are living in Ireland.
Talking about.
In twenty twenty-two, most settled people, most country people, they just don't know. They just don't know, they've never seen this. I would say the majority of trav- uh, the majority of settled people in Ireland have never. Been on a haltin' site. Um, the majority of Irish people have never had a conversation with a traveller that's beyond. Do you want to buy a car off me?
Yes.
You know? And it's fascinating, and that's why I said in, in episode one, I am fascinated by travelling people. I'm concerned about travelling people, I'm inspired by travelling people, I want to work with, support, help, embrace, empower. Travelling people. Um, it does me an awful lot of good and I hope it does travelling people some kind of good. Uh, and if they, if they get nothing out of it at all, other than a bit of a voice on a podcast, that's plenty.
Yeah.
Um, I, I work here, um, I'm a community worker. I'm trying to change the culture in my community in relationship, in relation to how they see themselves, how the police see them. How the, uh, Dublin City Council see them, um, and I'm including the travelling people in that, um.
Strange enough Dean, um, some of the councils, as you, when you speak about councils, and you say how the council see them. Some of the councils don't see them at all.
They don't see them at all, yeah, right.
Want to see them. And we've been down that road, we have, we'd have, we'd have, again, I want to make one thing clear, this is not just about me. It's not just about the people living around me. This is happening in a lot, a lot, a lot of parts of Ireland, a lot of Ireland. And I'm, I'm, I, I could probably use the word, say, look, it's, it's happening all over Ireland.
Yeah.
If that's the right word to use.
I would say if it's not happening in, in a place, in, say, a traveller's site or a camp or a haltin' site, it's rare if it's not happening. If, if the total, um, disregard for travelling people. Isn't happening in a specific location, that's, that's rare. If they're being treated with humanity and dignity and respect, that's rare. Uh, the opposite is the reality, the opposite is every single day they're being treated. Like they're on wrong minus one of the ladder, like they're subhuman.
Like nine, nine, hey, let's say for instance, right, nine times out of ten, right, you'll hear a traveller talk, yeah? Almost that amount of times, a, a conversation will go about, uh, discrimination. About how travellers are treated and the fact that they've been ignored for so long, yeah? But you have to understand that, that's just the way travellers feel.
Yeah.
That's exactly how they feel and they're trying to voice their opinions, then you, the chances are you'll be looked at like, ah, hold on for one second. The travellers are always complaining, the travellers are always throwing the sympathy card, the travellers are always talking about discrimination.
Well, it's, it's look.
It's a chance that, 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 that people do look at things that way, and I don't know if they do, they probably do sometimes, maybe a lot of people look at it. But how about if that's the way you're left feeling and that's the way, that's the situation that your life is in? And you want to talk about them things. Can you be accused of, uh, of, of using all your, uh, your cards up like?
Yeah, well, they use, in, in settled or in the countryman's world, uh, they call that by. By slagging off somebody who's co- complaining about the situation they're in, yeah? It's called victim shaming, okay? And it's a big no-no in the settle world.
Right.
Don't shame the victim. And in this situation, uh, the traveller is not only being shamed as a victim. But they're being accused as being the perpetrator or the person who's doing the wrong or the violent one. Or the, the homophobic one, or the one that's keeping women suppressed, um, or the one that's doing dodgy dealings and robbing people and so on. So what I am trying to do here, I think I've just realised, is allow a space for travellers. And you specifically to start to listen to yourself, to hear yourself, to inform yourself from your, your own past. Uh, to realise where you're at and to maybe plan a future, uh, for you, your, your community and your family and so on. And not anymore have our hand out going, please, 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 can I have some more? Uh, please, so give me some more. For you to take control, to take the power, to take ownership of where you're going. And not be dependent on the state or the government to say this is where travellers are going. Because what happened in nineteen sixty-three or whatever it was, was the state decided, we don't want travellers anymore. What's happened for the last fifty years in Dublin is councils have decided, this is what travellers are going to get and that's it.
I don't think travellers have that at the moment, I don't have that kind of power, do they? There's nothing handed over to, to travellers to, to, to deal with, like, you know what I mean? Is that not why we have councils?
It is, yes.
Tell me what kind of, uh, right, wh- what you just said there was a big statement to make about.
Absolutely, it was a huge statement.
Right, so what kind of power do settled people in Ballymore have to take that kind of thing into their hands?
So that's why I'm doing this Health and Fitness Festival in Ballymore, because what I'm trying to do is show the people in Ballymore. That for fifty years that they've had, um, their hand out, accepting the fact that the expertise is coming from. Outside the community, we're gonna pay them loads of money and they're gonna come in and tell us how to live. For me, the expertise is in this community, the wealth and knowledge and wisdom is within the people here. Uh, and I think it's the same for the travelling people.
I don't know Dean, I can't, I, you're, you're probably making a lot of sense there, but I can't see the picture. For instance, right, take a group of settled community here, right, in Ballymore. I'm only just saying this now as an example, or I'm not saying this is the case. And say for instance, right, everything's getting done for them, right? Um, so basically, right, you're living in, um, just say a certain area in Ballymore, right? And the council are coming in, they're fixing up the houses and they're fixing up around the area, and they're knocking the door, um, is everything okay here? Is there any problems in your house? Is there water leaking? Is your, is electricity supply in order? Is, um, whatever, just say all the basics, right? Making sure that everything's okay. Yeah, that's fine. That means then the people in them twenty houses don't have to put their hands out and say, look, it's, this is wrong and that's wrong. This is not fixed, there's a problem here, there's a problem there, and the council won't fix it. So basically, they're left with no options, only to put their hand out and ask.
Mm-hmm.
The councils that are supposed to fix these things, to fix them. Okay, so it's the same thing with the traveller community. If it's a thing, you're living in a community, whether you're a traveller or settled, right? And the councils have a responsibility to maintain that certain area, yes, and they're not doing it. Do you have any options but to speak up and say, hold on for one second, I have no one to turn to here, I need to turn to the councils, why? Because it's their responsibility to look after this place. Now the hand is not put out, why? Because they're doing their job, so you don't need to put your hand out and ask for this or ask for that. Because yes, it isn't a ver- it is a very, very embarrassing situation when you have to ask somebody for something. But what's also shaming for these councils is the fact that you do have to ask in the first place.
Yeah, yeah.
For to fix, um, something that they owned. They owned, councils owned a house or they owned a site. It's their duty to maintain the basic necessity on, on, on that house or that site. And if they're not doing it, then you have to open your mouth and ask them to do it. Okay, because you could be, you, just because you're a tenant there, doesn't mean you can afford to actually fix the things that needs fixing. And also, the fact that the council owns them, it's their duty to fix them.
Yeah, and I'm gonna change one of the words, I'm gonna go from ask, I'm talking about changing it from ask.
Yeah.
To tell.
To tell them, yes.
And that's a difference, there's a big difference there.
Sounds, yeah, it, it, there is a difference, asking and telling is too different.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the travelling community or the, or the, the tenants in Ballymore.
Yeah.
Um, uh, or not just Ballymore, I'm just using Ballymore as an example, this is where we live.
Yeah, that's right.
Instead of asking and begging and pleading, is to demand and tell governments and councils. This is how it's going to be from now on, because the councils and the governments have all the power, but none of the responsibility. And the people have none of the power and all of the responsibility. And that is going to, in, in, in my, um, in my head, that is going to change. The more people realise what power they actually have. And one of the ways that a community or people in the community get power is that they start to hear their own voice.
Yes, but there's a lot of, there's a, there's a, there's a big, big problem about having power. It, um, if you haven't got the right power, the power in, in their hands is money.
Yeah.
It's a simple as, no matter what, we can go on, talk about this all day, but what it all boils back to is money, because every time. When a certain place needs a repair or needs looking after, the first thing they'll say, and they have used it a hundred times over. We don't have the money, we don't have the funds. But the reality is they do have the funds.
They've got plenty of funds, they're not spending it.
Why should, um, why should a tenant have to actually have an argument or a fight with a landlord? Which is, we're talking about councils here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Why should a tenant have to have an argument or a fight with a landlord that should know his duty? If you make a complaint about something, yeah, that's wrong in your house or wrong in your site, yeah, you're com- you're, you're, you're complaining for a reason. Uh, because something is broken and needs fixing, yes? Why should you have to have a fight because they're ignoring it? They're actually ignoring the fact that something over here needs to be repaired, so they turn a blind eye to it. So naturally, you're gonna come and complain again about it. If you have ways of fixing it yourself, you might, the chances are. You probably will fix it or would fix it. But if you don't have the ways and means of fixing it, and it's not your duty to actually fix it. Then you have no choice to open your mouth and tell, look, it's, oh, it's your responsibility here, you're the, you're the landlord of this, this property here.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe, uh, try and tie this up, uh, with, uh, Dublin City Council's own motto.
Yeah, can I say one thing before you go there? The thing we were talking about first of all was mental health, uh, health issues, sorry, not mental health, but health issues. A lot of this, completely everything we're talking about here, it does affect people's health.
Yeah.
It affects them mentally and physically.
Yeah, and emotionally.
And emotionally, in a lot, a lot of ways.
Psychologically.
Yeah, but when, um, when you don't see this, when you're, when you're not living around it and you're not living in the centre of it. Then it's not your problem. And I'm talking about.
Yeah, out of sight, out of mind.
Yes, exactly, yes. And that's the way it's been treated.
Yeah, yeah. And travellers are even o- more out of sight because their sights are outside of, uh, you know, at the side of towns and so on.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so the, in Dublin City Council, cause that's where we are. Dublin City Council's motto written on the floor of City Hall on Parliament Street.
Yes.
Yeah, in tiles.
Yes.
It's an, it's an old, uh, Latin phrase.
Yes.
Uh, I don't know what the Latin is, but the English translation is, happy is the city whose citizens obey.
Whose citizens obey?
Yeah.
So is that like lay, laying down a law like this?
Well, it's like saying, uh, the city will be happy once you obey.
Listen to us.
Yeah. We have, we have all the rules, we don't follow them all ourselves, we don't have much of the responsibility. But we've got all the rules and all the money.
Yeah, I think this is disgrace.
Um, and that is affecting the health and welfare of the citizens in, in this city.
Yes, and, um, and what's happening because of money. It is, every, as I said.
Money, power.
It is money, yeah, well, you look at it, they feel that the money is the power.
Yeah. Well, without the money, they're powerless.
Yeah, but are they aware of the damage that they're doing, that they're actually doing to people?
Uh, well, I'll tell you what, that's one of the reasons I wanna do this podcast, is because you can only be, as me ma'd say, you can only be in the Nile once, yeah?
Yes.
Once we put this out there into the world and people listen to it, it's out there.
As I said, again, it's too bad you have to actually, um, when I say fight, I don't mean physically fight. I mean, I'm talking about words here, right?
Well, Roddy Doyle has a place in town and he calls it fighting words, and sometimes.
No, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Sometimes you need to use words to fight.
Yeah, and it's too bad you have to do it just to be listened to at times.
Yeah, what's the other one? The pen is mightier than the sword.
That's right. But it's crazy, again, it's a crazy world and this is where we're living at the moment.
Uh, now, uh, me, me and you, we've taken action, um, we've had a human rights protest, uh, which we'll talk about in another episode. Human, uh, human rights protest in, in Ballymore against Dublin City Council Super Depot. Um, and because our words weren't being listened to and we took action.
That's right.
But sometimes if you use the right megaphone and the right, um, platform.
Yes.
Your words can reach further than those areas that aren't listening to you.
Yeah, uh, but what, what do you have to do at times to get the people to listen?
Um, I think sometimes, I think sometimes if you embarrass them into it, it's not a bad strategy.
No.
You know, somebody else who they fear or respect taps them on the shoulder and says, listen, you need to cop on here.
Yes, but I think it's actually disgraceful that you actually have to have a protest against your own council. To actually, to, to get them to listen to you, so that you can actually just, um, voice your opinion basically. So you're literally, you're still really only talking, yeah? You want them to hear the problem here. And then you're, um, hopefully, they, between you and them, that you can come up with a solution. But when they're giving you a deaf ear and you actually have to protest just for them to listen, that's absolutely out of this world.
You have to do risky, risky thing, like have a protest.
Yeah.
Where in this day and age, it could land you in trouble, like, you know?
Uh, yeah, it's very, only that if you know how to go the right way about it, yes, and use it, do, do this protest with manners and respect. And also, not use no violence.
Yeah.
So you're still only using words, but at the same time, you're ac- actually asking them to cooperate here. Because you're cooperating and this is the only means of getting them to listen to you. By using, by doing something that you don't actually want to do, which is have a protest.
What you actually want to do is be spending time with your family, uh, earning a few quid.
Yes.
Educating yourself.
Yes.
Sending your kids to school, going to, sending them to college.
Yes.
Feeding them properly, walking in the park.
Yeah.
What you don't want to be doing is. What you don't want to be doing is freezing, uh, freezing your ass off protesting at half six in the morning.
So it's like you're fighting with somebody, it it, it is, it's like you're fighting with somebody, uh, and that somebody is is the councils. So if they were to listen in the first place, then sure, i- i- things wouldn't have got to that level then. So for me, um, having that experience, there's a lot, a lot of ignorance, and it's coming from the councils, simple as that. Uh, they might look upon travellers as travellers are ignorant, yes, maybe travellers are ignorant in their eyes, I don't know. But what even makes it more ignorant is having intelligent, educated people. Working in high offices, knowing they have a job to do, and they're actually ignoring that job. They're ignoring the effects that these things are taking on people. And it's their duty to try to lessen these effects, try to minimise these effects. Minimise the damage that's getting done to people's health because of all those reasons. Because, yes, it is health damaging, no matter how we look at it or how we don't. It is health damaging to be living in conditions like this. To be ignored by by the, by the government officials, if you wanna call them that, yeah? So what happens is, you you begin to lose respect for them. You look up to them first, because you think that they're on your side.
And and lose respect for the office that they're in.
When you're, when you realise that they think nothing of you, and they literally, look at it. You're, you're basically nobody in their eyes, yeah? And the fact that they are ignoring you so much, that is, that is affecting, that's mentally affecting. Because why, you feel like you're just, uh, I'm not just saying this for me. I'm talking this for a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of travellers who probably experienced the same thing. You're, you feel like you're non-existent, and who's making you feel non-existent? The people that should be concerned about your welfare, about your, 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 your health, for instance. Yeah, about your um, the conditions of life that you're living in. There's a lot, there's a lot, lot more than that, it's deeper than they think. And yet, they're ignorant towards it all, they don't want to listen, they don't want to take, uh, they don't want to do their duties. They don't want to take on their responsibilities, yeah? They don't want to even uh, communicate, and this is not just now, it's been happening for a long, 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 long time.
Uh, that.
They do the things, like you said earlier on, I'm stop, I'm stopping you from talking, sorry about that.
Go on, you're alright.
They do the things that they're forced into doing. But it's not just by.
When you embarrass them.
Yeah, but it's not just by travellers. Like you said earlier on, it's somebody else that's giving them a tip on the shoulder and saying, hold it, straighten yourself up there. You have a job out there to do, why don't you go and try to do it? At least do a little bit of it. You mightn't complete the form, but at least start it off.
So it reminds me of a, a song, uh, Damien Dempsey, greed is the knife and the scars run deep.
Yes.
And I hope it's just greed, and I hope it's nothing more sinister than that. Uh, hatred or blind ignorance. Uh, if it's greed, we can address that, because we can just move people out of offices who are motivated by money and power.
Yeah.
You know, but if it's, if it's hatred or blind ignorance, uh, that's more incestuous. That's more built in, deeper into the character of those people, or in into, into the institutions.
I'd, I honestly do think there's a lot, a lot, a lot of ignorance, absolutely a lot of ignorance. How can these people feel intelligent when they're actually degrading their intelligence? By uh, by being ignorant in the first place, that's the way I see it.
Yeah.
If you're an ignorant person, you are actually degrading your own intelligence. So why keep using the one thing over and over and over, which is ignorance all the way? And personally, for me, I think, as I said, look at it, I can manage, I get through things. I feel sorry for the, for the older people who can't cope with all of this. I feel sorry for the, the young, the young kids. I genuinely do, there's no doubt of this, it's come to my attention a lot of times. Where uh, the sorrow would sort of affect you, that you have for older, older men and women and younger kids. Because um, let's say, the middle-aged person like myself, you might just get through it somehow. You can barge your way somewhere there, like, and just as a fellow says, when I say barge, I mean, tip along and just take one day at a time kind of thing. But the reality of it is, it's something that you get so used of. Now, I'm not saying this for everybody, but I am saying for me, it's something that you get used of, and it becomes normal. It, it doesn't seem to affect you anymore. But what it does do, it makes you stronger. Then, when you get stronger, you want to talk out, you want to talk up. So you don't really care anymore, because why, you've been too nice to them all along, and yes, we have been. Too nice to them all along, playing their games, playing the rules that they want to lay down, and abiding by these rules.
One thing I, I um.
Which is no benefit, absolutely no benefit to us, the, the rules that they make.
One thing I say is, if you play, if you play their game by their rules, the house always wins. What we can do is look at establishing a new game or a new set of rules. Or what's, what's a win for working class people? What's a win for travelling people? Do we even know, are we just gonna continue to take what we're given and put up with it? And allow uh, that to be norm.
Well, you see, that can build, um, yeah, what you're saying there about take what we, what we're given.
Yeah.
And put up with it, yeah, that can happen to a lot, because um, it's like you're sort of left in a, in an opinion where. People will wonder, well, why is nothing done here? Why is no one talking up here? It's because you keep getting pushed back so many times, you were inclined to give up. It's like um, you're knocking on a door here, but you're getting no answer, the door opens and it closes again. So you're back where you started, and it happens over and over and over, so before you know it, your confidence is destroyed. You don't wanna go down that road again, so what do you do? You just settle with the way things are, simple as.
Roll, roll over and take it.
Sorry?
Roll over and take it.
You know in your heart that the way things are, are not right, they're not the way things are meant to be. But what do you do? You say, look, it's, it's okay, uh, just leave it as is, kind of thing.
Yeah, don't bother.
In other words, it saves you a lot of hassle by not talking up, because you feel you're getting nowhere anyway.
So me and you are in a very privileged position here, sitting here recording this, okay? Because we haven't been worn down so much.
Well, I only hope, I only hope.
Built up.
I only hope one thing that I, in our little chat here, that we haven't offended anybody. I know I'm yap, yap, yap all the time, and I can't help that sometimes. But um, I hope I haven't offended anybody, cause I'm not, I'm not sitting in this chair here, in this little studio here, to offend anybody, that's not my um. That's not my intentions.
Yeah, and if somebody, if somebody does get it.
Don't, no, don't get me wrong, I have nothing to uh, to worry about when it comes to councils.
Yeah.
Uh, because the truth is, they have caused more offence to the traveller community than any other person in this entire world.
Pretty good.
There's no mistake about that, so I am not apologising to, to no councils. I am saying that if anybody listens to this in the future, whether they're settled or travellers. I don't mean to offend them in any possible way. I'm speaking from my own experiences and the experiences that goes on around me, the things that goes on around me. And also the things that I have seen happening. In other words, I'm a witness to a lot of this.
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm living in the middle of it, and have been for a long, long time. And again, I can say also, there's probably a lot of travellers, experiences the same things, and maybe feels the same way.
And I'm going to say.
Very hurtful.
As, as, say that again?
I said, very, very hurtful.
As a, a settled man, as a countryman, I've grown from getting to know you, my life has improved, I feel healthier.
In what way?
Just, I used to feel a bit ashamed talking to travellers, because I thought. My fellow countrymen have done this to your people.
Dean, don't get me wrong in saying this, right? If I sit here and talk about, say, you're a countryman, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm a traveller, right? I don't mean to offend anybody in the, in the, in the settled community, because I know that this is not, the settled community are not to blame for these things.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And I also know that in the settled community, um, there is poverty also.
Yeah.
Parts of it, now you might talk about that yet, but I'm not staying on totally oblivion to all of this. I'm not gonna sit here and be like, as stupid as I possibly can be. I know there is poverty all over the world, in parts of it, not, not all over the world, but in parts of the world, and also in parts of Dublin. There is a lot of deprived areas, but at this, it, it, it still comes back to the one thing. I might be having a talk about travellers here, and I might, I might be pointing out about the situation with travellers and how they get treated by the councils. But if there's deprived areas in Dublin and Ireland, for that matter, yeah? Well, it's a fact then that the councils are not doing their jobs in them areas also, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I'm not just, again, as I said, I, I know.
I think we're, we're using their experience here as an example, but it's not unique, it's not, it doesn't only happen here. We all know from um, news articles and reports and so on.
Yes.
That it's happening uh, in, across the country in various, in various locations.
Board, yeah.
Uh, what I'm saying is, from our conversations, from me doing this podcast for you, with, with me getting to know you for the last two years. I've grown as a man, and uh.
Are you seeing your, kind of more of an understanding of how travellers sort of, their lives are?
My relationship with you adds, adds to me, it adds value to who I am. It makes me feel better about myself, it makes me stronger.
Yeah.
You know?
So, but you do know a lot of travellers up and down the country, don't you?
Yeah, I know travellers all over the place.
You have dealt with a lot of travellers.
Yeah, not, 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 not all of them are, are, are as confident and as vocal as you.
I don't know.
Able to, to speak about uh, the stuff that's going on in their lives.
Yeah, but don't forget, uh, uh, Dean, it's very, very um, it's very, very easy for a person to speak. I, I'm not saying I have confidence in any way whatsoever, I do know one thing. It's very easy for us, for a person to speak their minds if they're angry about situations.
Mm-hmm.
Do, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So therefore, if I'm speaking to you about these things, maybe it's because I'm angry, yeah?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying to you? So I'm sure there's a lot of people that maybe think the same way, or can speak in the same way, if you know what I'm saying. That it's not all about the sympathy card or the discrimination card, or the traveller guy is crying out again, it's nothing to do with that. It's about the reality today that we live in.
Mm-hmm.
And have been living in it for a long, long time, and again, yes, I do feel sorry for a lot of settled community also. Because why? Because there is a lot of um, deprived areas in Dublin and around Ireland also. That where the councils are not doing their job, and yes, it is causing a lot of, a lot of effects on health. Mental health, physical health.
Emotional health.
Emotional health, there you go, so it's not, it's not just exactly all about travellers here.
Yeah.
It's also in the settled community, I mean, and if anyone knows, you probably know that.
So I'm gonna give you a compliment that I tried to give you a minute ago, but I don't know if you heard it.
Sorry.
When I talk to you, when we spend time together, when we listen to each other, I grow from that.
Are you saying I'm educating you or?
Well, you could say it's educating, but I, I would say I'm getting a lot of wisdom from you.
That was actually a joke, honestly.
But, no, I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely being serious, and I think that there's an opportunity. For conversations to have between travellers and travellers, between travellers and settled people. Uh, for us to learn from each other and grow from each other.
Well, you see, the thing about it is, the chat we're having here now, right?
Yeah.
Um, I can honestly, yeah, that maybe I do feel good about, because, and I'm, say, for instance. If there's travellers out there that, there is, I know there is travellers that like to speak up also, yeah? It's probably a great thing for them to have the opportunity just to talk.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what I'm saying? Because it can be so annoying sometimes, maybe all the time. That you go on, you're dealing with the one situation over and over and over and over and over, and nothing is getting done about it. So basically, no one is hearing anything, no one is, is, is um, not that nobody is listening to anything. It's just that nobody is talking about these things.
Yeah, and that, I think that that's what we're trying to do here.
And I think, again, I'm stopping you from talking, and I, I apologize. And I think this is why our councils can get away with so much.
Yes.
And this is why parts of our country, settled and travellers, is because um, this is why it's, it's happening. So we're getting basically run to the ground because we're not talking up, so we're not shaming anybody into doing anything. Now, we shouldn't have to shame anybody into doing anything. If a man's got a job to do, he should be, he should be able to do it, or at least do it to his best, to the best of his ability. And back again to landlords and councils and wanting or another, who else do you go to if you can't go to them?
Let's look at developing a healthier relationship between travellers and travellers. Travellers and settled people.
Yeah.
Travellers and councils.
I was gonna say that, travellers and councils.
Councils.
Yeah.
Governments and, and citizens.
Yeah.
Uh, that's where uh, the conversation should be going, let's talk as adults.
Yeah, don't fight, don't fight.
And have healthy discussions, dialogues, conversations.
Yes.
Let's tease issues out rather than pointing fingers and blaming each other.
The thing about it is, it has to lie somewhere.
Yeah.
Someone has to be responsible, uh, responsible for it, so who's responsible? If you own a house and you lease it out to somebody, you rent it out, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
And say for instance, right, the underfloor heating, that lovely heating that you, that you do have, yeah? Uh, if a pipe bursts underneath, whose duty is to get it fixed?
Yeah.
Who's?
There is a duty of, of care.
Who, who is the duty? Yours?
The landlord, the fellow who owns the property.
Landlord then, right?
Yeah, me.
So the tenants contact you to get that fixed, and you don't get it fixed, who are they gonna blame for it? They're gonna blame you.
Yeah.
So you're saying there, um, let's not get into things where we're looking for someone to blame. It's not about someone to blame, it's a fact that people are not doing the job they should be doing.
Yeah.
They're not taking care of the things that need taking care of. They're not standing up to their, to their, uh, to, let's say, the jobs that they were given, in other words. You work for Dublin City Council, you have a, a house to maintain, you have a site to maintain, why are they not being maintained? It means you're not doing your job then, so the finger is gonna be pointed at you if you're not doing your job.
So I take that back, we're going past talking, let's get it done. You're being paid big enough wages, let's get it done, or get out.
We can't just sit here and say, let's not look for someone to blame.
Yeah.
It's not about looking for someone to blame, we shouldn't have to look for someone to blame. If things were getting done the way they should be getting done, yes, and people were doing the jobs the way they're supposed to be doing them. Such as the councils, okay, right, then we would, there'd be no fingers pointing in the first place. There'd be no conversation about councils not doing what they should be doing. There'd be no, um, let's say, no interaction.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd be no confrontations, there'd be no phone calls about people complaining about this, that and the other. It's a fact that you're left with no options, you have to complain or shut up. Do you shut up and watch that burst of pipe coming through your floor, and keep walking around it every day without complaining? And keep your mouth closed? So it, it, it means then, when you open your mouth, it's called a complaint, is it called looking for someone to blame? Is that what it's called? So therefore, what do you do? Again, just leave it, let it be, let the pipe keep leaking under your floor and let the whole house flood out. Is that the case? Is that, is that, is that what the landlords and the councils are waiting for? Is that, I'm not talking about, when I say landlords, I was using you as a landlord.
They are the landlord.
No, there's some, I know there's, I'm not talking about every landlord, I'm talking about.
But in this case, Dublin City Council are the largest landlord in the, in the city.
Obvious, it's only obvious if there's private landlords out there.
Yeah.
That are looking after their places, they're looking after their houses, they're being good to the tenants, looking after the tenants, fixing stuff that gets broke or. Maintaining the, that property, naturally, that's good, obviously. I, I don't, I, I have never heard, like, I never hear much complaints about private landlords and stuff like that. We are generally talking about council here.
Yeah.
Simple as, that's what I'm talking about, I'm not talking about private landlords, I was only using you. As a bit of a reference, wherever, wherever you wanna call it, yeah? That's the moral of my story, whether it makes sense or not. And it can be very, very head-wrecking, yeah? And again, back to the thing about health, these are the things that damage people's health, whether they like it or not, whether they can see it or not.
I like, uh, I like when you talk freely like that, because like. Usually the episodes, these episodes are like an hour and a half, that's like me and you, comfortable chatting, we can talk about. But there's something extra tonight in this episode, there's about a twenty minute, half an hour extra bit where you went, you know what? I'm just gonna go for this, um, and it doesn't get done enough.
Enough.
Um, it doesn't, we don't talk about these things enough, because we sound like we're giving out, but we're not. Um, what we're doing is speaking up, opening our mouth, having a voice, having a bit of power.
It's not exactly giving out, as I said earlier on.
Yeah.
It's a fact that we shouldn't have to talk about these things in the first place, because if things were right, then there'd be no need to talk.
Done. Done.
So, um, are we finished here for the evening, yeah?
We're finished now, brother.
All right.
We got it all now, what does that feel like?
Uh, well, it's not even about what I want to feel like, it's not like I'm out here to be handing everybody up around like, or, or having a go with somebody, you know what I mean? That's not the case. The, the case is that everything we talked about here is reality, simple as.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be reality, it is, but it shouldn't be. And again, these are the things that do damage people's health, simple as, so it means somebody was responsible for that.
So that's us this week, health.
Yep, you're Dean.
And I'm Martin.
Oh, you're Dean, I said. See you later. So that's us for this episode, a traveller and a countryman podcast. If you like it, let us know, share it around, and, uh, we'll see you on the road.